Comments from visitors? Anyone wanted to approach the council with any comments? Please come to the microphone, give us your name and address, and I'll give you about three minutes. And the council will not respond. Anyone coming forward? Seeing none, we'll go to the consent agenda. Tonight on the consent agenda is the council minutes from September the 10th. Callaway County Humane Society 5K Run, the Brick District Downtown Trick or Treating Event, and the Brick District Halloween or Holiday Open House. These are all events we've had in the future, in the past. Do we have any comments on those?
Move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. We'll move on, there's no unfinished business, we'll move on to new business. I think this is a somewhat of a historic night for us tonight. Our Human Rights Commission will be presenting a posthumous award, the Biederman-Fike Humanitarian Award, and this hasn't been awarded for many years. And so they're bringing that back, and I thought that was a great thing. And so would all the commissions step forward, please?
The Jane Biederman-Fike Humanitarian Award honors a local woman for her significant contributions of time, effort, and dedication in the community.
It's nice to be in front of this august group of community members. I get to do two things that I relish doing. One, Jane Biederman-Fike. If you didn't know Jane Biederman-Fike, it was a huge loss to you. Jane Biederman-Fike gave more to people that had nothing than any person I've ever known. She took person after person under her wing and taught them how to help people that needed help. She worked at the state hospital for a number of years, she was a mentor to countless people. She then started the, put the curriculum together for William Woods for their social services degree. She was a woman with a heart bigger than Dallas. And the Jane Biederman-Fike Award is to award a woman who has contributed to the community above and beyond what her job might entail. Sherry McBride was a living example of Jane Biederman-Fike. She so quietly helped so many people in this community, in her church, at her work. She was a wonderful example of a human being. And for that reason, I'm really proud to have my mayor present the award posthumously.
Well, I'm gonna let you all present.
Oh, we get to do it, okay.
I think you all did a great job putting this together.
Anna, come up, it's gonna be you.
Certainly no one deserves it anymore than Sherry. I knew her for many years, as well as her father. So I thought I'd let you all present the award.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I have a few words if you don't mind.
Please, please.
My notes are on a pad that says Callaway County Public Library, and my sister Sherry gave this to me, and I will forever cherish this pad. The McBride family would sincerely like to thank the Jane Biederman-Fike Committee, the Fulton Council, and this committee, this committee, with a special honor for Sherry. My sister Sherry led a life of serving others, and she had unwavering devotion to her family. Her faith in God guided her as she saved so many in the community. So many times, Sherry would put herself behind other people, simply because she wanted to help them and please others. This is what we needed in life. Sherry had five siblings, and she would call each one of them at least once a week to see how they were. And since I lived in Fulton, I got a call three times a day to see what I was going to eat tonight, or did I talk to my dad, or did I go check on him? And Sherry was so devoted to my dad, Mr. McBride, she would spend countless hours at the hospital, at the nursing home. You know, hours that she should have been taking care of herself, but she didn't. We lost a sister, an aunt, a devoted member of the community, and Sherry was a believer in God. She was a child of God, and she wore that on her chest. Don't say anything bad about God, you know, or she would be in your face. She said, "If you have faith, you are one, a child of God." And that's what she was. So I know that right now, that she's with God, and she's an angel besides God. Thank you.
I had the pleasure of knowing Jane and working with her for a few years, but knowing her personally. And her biggest donation to this community was time. She spent time with people, and that's what made the biggest difference that I saw in the people that she worked with, is just the amount of time that she devoted to them.
Okay, we'll move on to council concerns. First up will be Councilman Hanchy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a meeting on the 19th, and we discussed, for the Public Safety Committee meeting, and we discussed the speeding on Gregory Lane, big truck parking on streets, recreational vehicle parking, and brush overgrowth on 10th and West Avenue. And came up with some pretty good resolutions, and I have no concerns.
Okay, thank you. Councilman West?
Thank you. The Historic Pres- no, that's the wrong one. The Human Rights Commission did meet, and I was unable to attend, I was out of town, so I really don't have an update there. But you just saw, we presented the Jane Peter McFike Award to Sherry McBride Brown, and that's a good choice, and there's lots of deserving people in the community, and we'll get around everybody. Attended the chamber after hours tonight, out at the Callaway Nuclear Plant, they're wrapping up 40 years of operation. Councilman Luther was there as well. Wasn't a lot of attendance, I think the remote location probably kept a lot of people away, but it was a nice event, so. And they've got a renewed license, they're entering the plan extended operation period for the next 20 years, so they, and they hope to be around for a long time and continue contributing to the community. And I have no items to discuss tonight, other than that.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Reclu?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I really have no concerns tonight that I want to share right now, and I just hope everyone enjoys the meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Stone?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Historic Preservation Commission met last month, and we welcome two new members that have been appointed at earlier council meetings, Bob Wise, and then we welcome back Warren Hallabaw. He had previously served on the Historic Preservation Commission, and he was also a previous city council member, so it was great to have him back. This evening, the Safe and Affordable Housing Task Force Group hosted a landlord and tenant town hall meeting, and the city of Fulton was represented very well. We had the chief and deputy chief of police there this evening, they had their own table with information available on housing crime and safe neighborhoods. And then we also had Kyle Brimmer, he was able to make a presentation to the group that was there this evening on all of the projects that's going on with the city, and did an excellent job of making that presentation, sharing that information with the community. And then the only other thing is a shout out this week, as it's City Cleanup Week, as we had in the spring. Even though we've got a lot of stuff out on the curbs, it's tidy. It's, it has been so nice the last couple of times, two, three times, that the town just isn't trashed for a week. It's, people are putting stuff out, they're being courteous where they place it, they're watching for sidewalks to make sure that people can still pass. Those that are going and gaining treasures are doing it in a very respectful way, and making sure not to, again, trash the, trash the street. So I'm just very proud of the citizens, the way that we handle this the last couple of years. And then just a huge shout out to the city workers, that are gonna have a big, heavy lift this week. And pray for them, and pray for their safe work, and thank them for all the work that they do. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Luther?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. There's been no airport advisory board meeting since our last council meeting, on some other topics. Would like to look for an opportunity for a work session, really around community revitalization. I've had some kind of this discussion with Courtney, starting to brainstorm, so this kind of stems back from, and I'll probably butcher it, Courtney might tell me the, is it southernmost, the number eight?
You know I'll remember this, Brad, because I'm so proud of it. We were one of the 15, I will, I say that, now I can't remember it either, I'm lost.
We're number eight.
Southern livings, 15 most affordable cities in the country. That's it.
What's got me thinking, I mean, that's awesome, I mean, that's amazing, we should all be proud of that, but okay, how do we go, how do we get higher on that list, right? And so as you drive through town, you know, you see opportunities for some flowers here, some cleanup here, the roundabout could use some pizzazz, maybe some paint here, paint there. Is there an incentive program we can do for businesses to, how do I promote, you know, looking even better than I am now? So what's that look like? And I don't know, but I know we have a team here that can figure it out, so maybe a work session to do some brainstorming, maybe it's a community involvement with Parks and Rec. But to really, you know, how do we get up further on that list to be, you know, number one, would be awesome. So just things to look at and plan for, for the future, so. That's all I got.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Combs?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Plan and Zoning Commission hasn't met since our last meeting, and I have no concerns tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Washington?
No concerns tonight, yeah.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nelson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Utility Board has not met since the last meeting, and I have no concerns. But I would like to reiterate what Councilman Stone said. It's so nice to see, I would like to focus more on our team and the fact that, you know, I can run in my neighborhood and there's not trash everywhere. They're also extremely mindful of people walking. I know right now that it's the time of the year that everybody wants to be outside, and our workers do an excellent job of being mindful of people in our community. So not only are the streets clean, everything's being picked up, people are tidy when they're picking, but our team is doing an excellent job of being mindful of other people in our community as well. And that's all I have.
Thank you. I might make all of you out there aware that, I know everybody up here knows, that we do have three linemen that are staged, that will be going into Florida, probably sometime tomorrow afternoon, I would expect, through the Missouri Public Utilities, they are coordinating the efforts for Missouri cities. I don't think that includes co-op, but the Missouri cities, I know our guys met in Kingdom City, I believe, yesterday, am I correct, Daryl? Why don't you just give us a little, give the citizens a little background? I know we know up here.
Yeah, when hurricane season hit, the city of Fulton went down as the second set of crews to be called, well, we was called this weekend. So as of 3:30 this afternoon, our folk, for about 200 miles out of Orlando, going on into Orlando, Orlando's who asked for the help, they are a municipality. So 58 personnel from Missouri went toward Florida, they all left yesterday, they should be arriving, they should be there now. Hotel accommodations are up, and everything is, is fine. From the first group that went down there, I think all those are back, except for Conway, and Conway likes a couple of days finishing up, and I think in North Carolina or South Carolina, then they'll be coming back. So they all should be there, all the paperwork's done, and it all started with Orlando asking American Public Power for help, and then they, American Public Power hit the states. So would like to shout out, though, to the mechanic staff, they came in this weekend, they serviced those trucks, and got them ready to go on that trip. So I think they came in Sunday and worked on all three trucks to make sure that they was in the correct shape to make that trip.
Thank you, Daryl. One of the biggest questions I've been asked is if we send somebody down there and we have a problem here, then who's gonna take care of that? And the answer to that is, because we do belong to Missouri Public Utilities, they would send people in as well to help us. So it all works out. Thank you, Daryl. Move on to resolutions. The first resolution is 3553, it's to step into the swim grant. Councilman Stone, would you read that for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 3553, Step Into Swim Grant. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton to make application and sign all necessary documents in relation to the Step Into Swim Grant to provide scholarships for swim lessons in the winter months. I make a motion to pass Resolution 3553 at tonight's meeting.
Second. Very well, do we have any discussion?
Sounds like a great opportunity, hope we get it.
Super exciting.
Yep. Do you want to say anything about that?
So if we are awarded the grant for Step Into Swim, what we would allocate those funds for is to pay for a reservation for indoor facility to utilize, and then train staff to instruct the lessons, and also additional equipment to perform the swimming lessons. Okay?
Great, thank you. Okay, thank you. All in favor of Resolution 5553, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We'll move on to Resolution 3554, and that is the Residential Demolition Project. Councilman Luther, would you read that for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 3554, CDBG Residential Demolition Project. Resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to execute all necessary documents in relation to a contract with Mid-Missouri Earth Movers LLC from Jefferson City, Missouri, for the demolition, demolition and asbestos abatement of 36 residential properties located within the city limits of Fulton, Missouri, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to adopt Resolution 3554 at this council meeting.
Second.
Excellent. I think this is one of the more important grants that we've had for a while, and as far as our citizens are asking about this quite often. And I want to thank Kyle for his hard work on getting this across the line, as far as we've gotten so far. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We'll move on to Resolution 3555, and that's the School Resource Officer Agreement. Councilman Combs, would you read that, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 3555, School Resource Officer Agreement. A resolution authorizing the city of Fulton to enter into an agreement between the city of Fulton and the Fulton Public School District for the purpose of establishing a cooperative relationship to provide one school resource officer on the school campuses during the 2024, 2025 school year, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 3555 at this council meeting.
Second. Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, I guess, we've been without a school resource officer for several years since-
We've rarely never had one.
I thought-
What was the role of Major Rice?
He wasn't, he wasn't a full-fledged school resource.
Okay. All right, thank you. But I hate to say this, and I hate that we have this need, but is one person going to be enough with what's going on in the world?
Yeah. Thank you.
I applaud this, just, you know.
Is one person enough? No, she's going to be extremely busy.
Good.
And the SRO isn't there to be a police officer in the schools. They are a deterrent to violence and things like that, and intruders. But the bigger thing is that they're educators as well. McKenzie Elmore Chisholm, who had worked with, with us, starting 13 years ago, she was here for three years left to move back to Illinois, and she is back. You have to have that right person, that person that you know, you can trust wholeheartedly to be around all those kids, and work with school staff, and she wants to be there.
Agreed.
Her degree is in American Sign Language from William Woods University. I trust her completely, so that's why I want her to be in this position. The timing is just right. It really hasn't been right with maybe former administrations there, and the school board is wholeheartedly supporting this, and it's just the right time. It's the only school district in Callaway County that does not have an SRO. Officer Elmore has already gone through the SRO training and is certified already, and she will continue advanced training even, but she'll be ready to go, as soon as her shoulder heals up, she had to have a shoulder surgery. But we're excited, and I think the school's excited, and we're, we're ready to start building great relationships with kids in the schools.
Yeah, that's, and that's wonderful. I think she'll be the, she'll be the face that the kids will know, and it won't be, you know, the stigma of a police officer or whatever, you know, that-
No, and she'll, you know, and the SRO be dressed like in a polo and pants like I'm wearing, and not, you know, an imposing figure. She's extremely, extremely talkative and friendly, and I think it's just gonna be a good relationship to start with the school district, and I think it will grow as time goes on. I think they'll need more than just her.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you.
Yeah, Councilman West, that's all I was gonna say, to your point, there could be some grant opportunities out there, even, once we build, start this relationship, and hopefully we can grow it, and maybe with, through grants and other opportunities to help also the financial means, to your point, so.
Thank you, it's exciting.
Councilman Washington, do you have something? Oh, okay, sorry, I saw your mic on. Okay. Okay, seeing no other, no further questions, all in favor of Resolution 3555, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Thank you. Now we'll move on to 30, Resolution 3556, and this is the Conservation Fund Grant. Councilman Washington, would you read that, please?
Yes, sir. Resolution 3556, Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant. The resolution, the resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton to make application, sign, and all necessary documents in relation to the Land and Water Conservation, LWC, grant, for the removal and relaying of golf cart path at Tanglewood's Golf Course, and establishing effective date. I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 3556 at this council meeting.
Very good, thank you. Any questions on this resolution? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Very well. Councilwoman Nelson, would you read Resolution 3557, please? Paving repair up on Southwestminster.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 3557, Westminster Avenue Pavement Repair. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with Christiansen Construction Company of Kingdom City, Missouri, for Westminster Avenue Pavement Repair, COF 24-07. Make a motion, we pass Resolution 3557 at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Thank you. I think if you drove on Southwestminster, you see the need for this, but I would like to also commend our city workers for getting that, all that work done up there that needed to be done prior to the really cold weather, so we could get it, get it paved. Those guys worked hard up there. Okay, any discussion on that?
Well, will be the timing of the work that's under this council. Was this within our budgeted amount?
Kyle Brimmer, city engineer. Yes, regarding the, the timing, so the bids have been received, spoke with the low bidder, the bidder, Christiansen Construction, and he feels like he can get the majority of it, of it done, and, and pretty- Christiansen Construction, and he feels like he can get the majority of it done in pretty short order. He's got, I think, one obstacle in his way presently, but I think he'll get most of it done. This month, there is a little bit down at the intersection that involves some concrete work that will take him a little bit longer time to do, so that'll be a little bit of a delay, but the majority of it, he thinks he can jump on pretty quick.
No major concerns about the concrete work and the weather and the temperature and all of that?
No, the biggest concern would be on the asphalt, and I think we'll have enough time for that.
Thank you.
Does this involve just an overlay, or are they doing any curb work too?
There is some curb work that was taken out during the construction of the water line, so that will have to be repaired. It'll be patching of the ditch that the water line went in is what it consists of. Yeah, so no, it will not be a full-blown overlay.
So that's going to be re-overlaid in the future's time?
Not in the near future.
Not in the near future, okay.
Kyle, there's a metal plate that there's still work to be done, it's going to be closed on Chestnut. Well, that will be coming up pretty soon. I see a big metal plate.
The metal plate right at that intersection. Let me check with the guys on that. I'm not sure if that's just a spot that they're having trouble keeping filled with aggregate at the time. Right. I'd have to check with the guy specifically on why that's still there.
Thank you, Combs. Okay, all in favor of Resolution thirty-five fifty-seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Bill number seventeen twenty-eight for first reading, and this will be the twenty-twenty-five budget. Councilwoman Nelson, would you read that, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number seventeen twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-five budget. An ordinance adopting an official budget and capital improvement program and appropriating the funds for the cities, for the city for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty-twenty-five and ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Make a motion to place Bill number seventeen twenty-eight for second reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Thank you. First of all, all of you know, this is the first reading. I'm sure it's going to change from what you have seen, but we need to get this moving. And we'll have almost a month to discuss it, and I'm sure there'll be changes, and we'll deal them with them as they come up. But we do need to get this passed tonight so we can get it moving.
So Dustin's going to provide an overview of a lot of the high-level things in this budget, and then, of course, if you guys have any questions after that, we'd be happy to field them, okay? Dustin, go right ahead.
Thank you. Dustin Doherty, CFO, city of Fulton. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review the budget a little bit. I'd like to highlight a few things this evening. Feel free to stop me if you have any questions. So the total budget revenues for two thousand twenty-five excluding interfund transfers and transactions are forty-eight point two million compared to forty-five point six in two thousand twenty-four. This is an increase of five point eight percent, or about two point six million dollars. In this, in these revenues, we've included three point four percent utility rate increase. Total budget expenditures for two thousand twenty-five excluding interfund transfers and transactions are fifty-three point nine million compared to forty-nine point one in two thousand twenty-four. And this is a nine point eight percent increase, or about four point eight million dollars. Here are a few expenditures by category, kind of interesting to break it out by category. But there's fourteen point eight million dollars budgeted for personnel costs, seventeen point nine million for consumables, five point one million for contractual services, twelve point six for capital outlay, three point two for debt service, and about point three million for other expenses. Purchased power, we're expecting to see an increase of about five hundred eighty-five thousand in two thousand twenty-five. Cost of goods, we're expecting to see about an increase of five hundred and thirty-five thousand compared to two thousand twenty-four. We also have quite a few projects in two thousand twenty-five we're looking to complete. We've got the I-70 bore project, that's about one point four million. Garbage truck purchase, three hundred seventy-five thousand. Railroad stormwater retention project, about one point five million. Purchasing new fire trucks, one point one million. Gas turbine repair, three hundred fifty thousand. And then painting repair, water tower and ground storage, eight hundred thousand. Sewer treatment plant upgrades, three point three million. Airport runway rehab, three hundred thirty-eight thousand. We've also, we're going to see an increase in health insurance costs. We're looking at about a six percent increase for next year, and this is going to be about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. It's also important to note that the majority of these increases are funded through earmarked funds such as use tax, capital improvement tax, and ARPA funding. In closing, I just want to emphasize that this budget represents a conservative, yet realistic plan for two thousand twenty-five. It's important to note that sacrifices were made to achieve this balance, and cooperation of all departments was crucial in making it possible. We're confident that this budget will meet the city's needs while ensuring financial stability. Do you have any questions?
I might say that, like last year, all the department had input into their budget, and I'm sure that everybody didn't get what they, everything they wanted. But I think, after looking over it myself, I think we've got everything we need to continue to serve the people of Fulton in the best manner that we can. And I'm sure that maybe some of you have some further questions, and that's fine, but it's pretty tight, and there's not a lot of fluff in here, I don't think, at all.
No, well, I certainly would not say there's any fluff in there. That being said, I feel that we are in a much better position than we were last year, and I think that the number of projects and enhancements that you guys are seeing is reflective of that. So as Dustin mentioned, a lot of these things are funded through dedicated earmarked taxes or ARPA funds, the gas bore project being one of those specifically through ARPA funds. But again, we are really ecstatic to be able to reinvest in our infrastructure, specifically our utility infrastructure, in the coming year. And it's been a couple of years since we've been able to do that, maybe a few more than a couple of years. So I feel that this is, as Dustin said, a really conservative but realistic approach to twenty-twenty-five while making sure that we're properly serving our citizens and staying up with maintenance that hasn't been done in quite some time. So with that, if there are any questions, please let us know.
I do know that we've still got some budget proposals coming through. I know Historic Preservation Commission is meeting October twenty-first, and one of their items is a budget proposal for next year. And I believe we have our other commissions that are still working on the same, so we've got that to come.
On that note, I will let you know, we did plan, Kathy's kept us in the loop on kind of what those are looking like. So that is incorporated in the money that's already there in special projects.
Okay. And then a request that I've got, Dustin, is on the detail that you provided today, could you add a column of what the twenty-twenty-four estimated totals are going to be? We've got the actuals for the previous years, and we've got the budget for twenty-twenty-four, but if we could get the estimated actuals of what you think twenty-twenty-four is going to look like.
I can do that.
Courtney, I had a question on, have we have a grant rider or anything like that? Do we have one?
I am so thankful that you asked that question, Bob, because I'm excited to tell you this answer, so. Oh, okay, I'm too excited.
The purpose of it is, I'm still interested in trying to get some curbs and gutters for that Crestwood area over there by the ball field and things like that.
Yeah. Yes, no, okay, thank you for bringing me in a little bit. So we do have a new grants analyst, and I'm not going to lie, I'm maybe looking at changing that title a little bit because they're going to be also doing some stuff to assist with HR, but we have someone that's going to be starting on the twenty-first, and she is very well-known within the city team, and she's going to bring an excellent skill set. So very excited to have that spot filled so we can keep an eye out for excellent grant opportunities. And I will say, I know Kyle keeps a good eye on any sort of, you know, infrastructure and curb and guttering grants out there, so we have not forgotten about that, Councilman. But we will happily welcome her on board and look forward to her hitting the ground running to find us some additional grant opportunities. Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor of forwarding Bill number seventeen twenty-eight for second reading at the next meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No.
Mr. Henchy?
Aye.
Sorry, one second. Mr. Luther?
Yes.
Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. West?
No.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Seven council members affirmative, one opposed?
Very good, thank you. Motion passes. Now we'll move on to Bill number seventeen twenty-nine. Easement vacated, Councilman Combs, would you read that for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number seventeen twenty-nine, easement vacated. An ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton to sign all necessary documents to vacate all right, title and interest therein of an area of easements located in block one hundred of the city of Fulton, Missouri in favor of Aldi Incorporated of Fulton, Missouri. I make a motion to place Bill number seventeen twenty-nine for second reading at the next scheduled council meeting.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this? This is the Aldi's project and.
Yeah, so specifically, this is an easement that we're vacating in order for them to put in their sewer line.
Councilman Henchy, do you have a question?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I see the lights on, I think maybe.
He's looking for the lights, people, he's looking for the lights.
Okay, all in favor of passing Bill seventeen twenty-nine? Please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Now, Councilman Henchy, you can turn your light on.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Would you read Bill number seventeen thirty for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number seventeen thirty amended, parking on Wood Street prohibited or limited. An ordinance amending chapter one-one-zero, Traffic and Vehicles, section one-one-zero dash three-four-zero, parking on certain streets prohibited or limited of the Fulton City Code to prevent traffic impediments near the Fulton City Childhood Center by prohibiting stopping, standing, and parking on either side of Wood Street beginning five hundred feet north of Westwood Avenue and continuing north for a distance of eighteen hundred, or one thousand one hundred and eighty feet, including a penalty of five, or fifty dollars fine court costs for each violation and establishing effective date. I make a motion. I make a motion to place Bill number one-seven-two-nine, easement vacated, for the third reading, or second reading of this council meeting. One-seven-three-zero, for the third, second reading of this council meeting.
Second.
No, second reading of the next meeting. Sorry about that.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman. This is to try to eliminate the problem we have up on Wood Street with the childhood center up there. I know Chief Ladwick and his people have been up there, and it's been a mess. And so we have, Courtney has, talked with the school superintendent, and they've agreed that this would probably remedy most of the problems up there.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to, I want first off, say thank you to Dr. Crane and his staff. You know, obviously, there's a lot of things that have to get worked out. Anytime we start a new school year, we all anticipate that. But I think with the new addition of the kindergarten area, it's created a little bit more of a situation that we're having to address. So I want to thank Dr. Crane and his staff for coming with really proactive solutions and being prepared to help us enact rolling this out. Obviously, we are taking, you know, a somewhat emergent response on this because we need to get a solution as quickly as possible. I know that Councilman Henchy, Councilman West, you hear frequently from people in your ward. I hear, I don't want to say quite daily, but almost daily about this topic, and it's posing a public safety issue. So we had a situation at one point where public safety vehicles could not get through because both lanes of traffic were blocked. So I am very confident that with this measure from the city of Fulton and the steps that I know Fulton Public Schools are going to take that we can get this addressed and make it safe and keep that traffic flow moving. So I really appreciate your consideration of moving this forward.
I'd like to make a statement on this, too, is this is extremely important for the safety of our children, for our emergency vehicles, and just for the drivers in general. The situation when there's parking and blockage of the road creates a very serious safety issue, and this, I believe, will resolve most of it, or maybe all of it, and it will be very helpful.
We had that same type of situation down on South Fifty-four a number of years ago that some of you will probably remember, and this is a solution down there, and it worked very well, and I think it will here, too.
I, well, I came through there yesterday, and there were cars both directions. The parking lot for the kindergarten is full, okay? I mean, there's no more people can get on there, and there were cars in both directions waiting to get into the parking lot. I didn't see by parking or trying to park on Wood Street, I don't, I mean, this is fine, but I don't know what it's going to, I don't think this is going to solve the problem.
So part of what this is going to do, Councilman West, is the stopping issue, because you're absolutely right, they are stopping in the roadway, coming both directions. What this will allow our officers to do, right now, they technically can do that. This is going to allow our officers the latitude to be able to move those cars along, as well as Fulton Public Schools, to let those individuals know that if you're not on public school property, you're not in the parking lot, you need to continue moving. And I know that's going to probably be an inconvenience. We've, again, talked with Dr. Crane about this. I know that will be an inconvenience for people, you know, who are needing to get in there and get their children. This is a very, this is a very short window of time where people are stopping in the roadway. But nonetheless, again, we cannot have people stopping in the roadway for, you know, whether it's ten minutes or it's thirty minutes. We've got to keep traffic flow, the traffic flow moving. So one of the things with the parking issue is they try to keep the children and the vehicles moving. So you don't have a lot of parents that are parking, it does pose a hazard with the really small children. So basically, you're not seeing at this specific school, parents pulling in, parking, and going to get their child. That's not the way it's structured.
They're all lined up to pick them up.
Right. So what this will do.
Which I think is a safety issue anyway.
Sure, sure. Well, what this will do is keep the traffic moving on the street. They do have the ability to go park, they can make a round, whatever they need to do. There will also be staff members from Fulton Public Schools. I'm going to say, speaking out of turn maybe here on what Dr. Crane has proposed, but where they will also make sure that cars are only turning right when they exit, and that flow is continually moving. So.
Can we talk to the YMCA about maybe allowing some parking there?
I know there has.
I don't think they would care.
Yeah, I know there have been some communications, some discussions with, I believe, the public school and the YMCA. I can't really speak to that because it's not a discussion I've had. I can't really speak to that because it's not a discussion I've had.
I really hope we don't get to where we're ticketing people. I mean, this is imposing fines, et cetera, et cetera. You know, it's not the parents' fault that the school district decided to put this school here like this. And it's, the school, the street was not made for the amount of traffic it's seeing. I know it's only in the morning and only in the afternoon, but when people wanna go pick up their kids, they may have to be getting back to work or whatever, I don't know. You know, so, it's not a good situation.
It wasn't a good...
It shouldn't have been created to begin with.
Sure. No, I definitely understand those concerns and I think, you know, no one wants to be to the point of having to write a ticket, but when it comes down to making sure we keep people safe and we have those traffic flows, we will unfortunately take whatever steps we have to take to make that happen. So, I feel very confident that, again, Dr. Crane has a solid plan with his staff to communicate with those parents and this in conjunction with what we're proposing, I feel we can address the issue.
Are we gonna get extra signage out there as well?
There will be some more signage and then when this gets implemented, we will also have our flashing signs as well, so we can keep people in the loop. And then the school district will also be notifying parents as well.
Is, can we, can we cost share on those flashing signs with the school district?
You mean, charge the school district?
Like, split the cost?
Well, they are our signs and because it's something where we're changing, you know, again, if this goes through, we're changing a ordinance, it's really kind of, it's kind of on us. I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna charge the school district for that. I think that us working together to fix it would be the better solution.
I can imagine the cars coming from north to south that are going to be moved on along because they can't get into the facility, they might have the opportunity to turn around at the YMCA, which is gonna create more traffic in that parking lot. They might be able to turn around, head back north, hoping to get into the loop. But if they're heading north, there's really nowhere to go until you get...
To industrial.
To industrial or go into the high school. Or we're gonna be seeing people pull into private residence driveways and try and turn around again with the additional traffic. So, I, you know, unless you're going to come from the north and if you don't make it, take Z down to the business loop, business loop, all the way back to the high school and make that large circle, hoping you can get back in. I can just see, I'm in favor of this because it's what needs to happen. We need to keep the traffic moving, but it's gonna be a challenge for some of those folks. And we're, we might, we're really gonna need to watch the people going into private residence driveways.
Courtney, excuse me? Yes. It wasn't designed right, okay? It wasn't designed proper, same as when you're, same as when you're building a subdivision. You need to look ahead, it wasn't designed. Now, the problems, we're facing a problem that's very serious. So, we need to get together with several people that are involved and this needs to be corrected because there is a dangerous thing going on.
Is there opportunity to offset the release times? Whole school doesn't have a release time. I'm not sure, I'm gonna... No, no. I'm also gonna make sure we're making the right decisions here.
It's just first reading, so...
Not just create a new pass or a new YMCA, you know, this nightmare.
I invite you all...
I don't know what conversation that has been held and what's been heard, but it's never sound like this.
There have certainly been discussions about, you know, offsetting those release times and, again, I don't wanna overstep what our, what our role is in this, that's Dr. Crane's world to, to look at, but we have absolutely collaborated and had some discussions on that. I would reiterate, though, that, you know, when you look at Bartley School, which is also a school district, or I'm sorry, a school zone, that also has a no parking, stopping or standing in conjunction with it being a school zone. So, this is pretty standard.
That remedied that situation down there.
Now, again, different circumstances.
And thank you, because I was gonna bring that up, that was, that was an absolute unsafe environment.
Yeah.
Because people were parking on the east side of 54 and kids were crossing the business 54 in front of the school to get to those cars, so, absolutely.
So, I think in our...
Well, I don't think we're gonna know if it's gonna work unless we enact it.
Yeah, I think in our, in our most recent meeting, which was this past week, we all feel very confident that this is a step that can be taken towards enforcement, you know, and I'm not gonna sit here and tell you this is gonna remedy every single situation, but I do think it is a step in the right direction and, again, it's uniform with our other school zones. And if we find that it doesn't remedy the issue, we'll take additional steps to do that, but I feel confident and, again, what Dr. Crane and Chief Ladwig and Kyle and myself and Sam have discussed in being able to implement that.
Also, there is some wiggle room in their, in their design of their parking lot. They only use one of the parking lots and the other parking lot is not used by the parents. If they would tie those two parking lots together and, and, but the school needs to do this.
An ordinance amending Chapter 110 Traffic and Vehicles, Section 110-248, speed limits, Paragraph 3 of the Code of the City of Fulton, Missouri, by lowering the speed limit on Clay Mine Drive to 20 miles per hour and establishing effective date. I make a motion to place Bill Number 1731 for second reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Okay.
Very well, do we have any discussion on that?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I don't believe that it needs to be dropped down to 20 due to the reasons, there's not very many homes on that stretch of road and it's such a short road and to put a 20 mile speed limit on there, I don't think it's necessary. I know they got a couple of duplexes at our building there, but they're so off the road and I just don't see the need of changing it from what it is right now.
If I may, I drove it today and it's, there's no posted speed limit on it. I know, we all know, that means it's 30 miles an hour, but maybe not everyone knows that. I think typically residential areas would be 25 miles an hour and 20 would be a school district, so I would be in favor of 25 and I think 20 is a little bit low.
I agree with that. I feel like consistency, too. I do believe that 25 is, is that correct?
That's what I said.
25? I thought the same thing. I know that that's what my neighborhood is and I believe that that's also what South Winds is.
Kyle, would you like to come up?
Is it 20?
25, she said.
I think it's...
I just...
Any questions?
Okay, yes, Kyle.
Trying to figure out what I need to talk about here. I mean, I know we're talking about Clay Mine. What would you like me to address?
I guess why 20 versus 25?
That's what was suggested by the Public Safety Commission.
Was this brought up by residents in the area?
I believe, Kathy, can you help me on how that was brought up to the...
I feel like one of our residents reached out or...
I don't know how, I don't know.
It's been a while.
I couldn't tell you exactly how it got on the agenda, but it got on the agenda of the Public Safety Commission and...
Is 25 standard in neighborhoods?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it's standard, but it is more prevalent than 20 because 25, you are correct. I know in South Winds for sure.
Yes.
I believe Tanglewood, you would know, yeah.
Kyle? I just drove every, every place in the city, every neighborhood in this city for the last two or three days. I wrote down a speed limit in every place, everywhere, out here, everywhere. We've got a mess. We got 20, we got 25, we got 30. I've got a list of the streets and everything, I did, I've done this, I thought this is something that needs to be done. Because it's not, in other words, we've got 25 here, 20 there, downtown's 20, going through the city. I'd like to address this at the next meeting or at some type of a...
Okay. I, I don't remember exactly, I think one of the issues where that is a much narrower road, I believe.
It is narrow.
And that there are duplexes moving in there and so the, and there's already one duplex on the left up there. So, I think that their thinking was they were getting more people on that little narrow road, I think. And then one of the commission members brought up that the bus goes up that road and it's difficult sometimes if there's cars coming through there. So, that, that was their thinking.
I agree with Mary in that I would love to see us standardize what we're doing and make it the same in each and if 20 is the suggestion, I'm definitely not opposed to that. If we feel like it's a safety concern, I know people in my neighborhood would be thrilled to see a reduced speed, I'm sure, out in South Winds, especially with all the construction. So, if we feel like it should be 20, I'm not opposed to that, but I would love to see us standardize it moving forward.
I would like to make a motion that we amend Bill 1731 to 25 miles per hour.
I'll say it.
And then we can make, we can make that change and then we can let the residents let us know in the future whether or not that was adequate.
Um, on that, I'll just speak real quick. So, this was a citizen, when I was in charge of Burma, we had a citizen call and complain and at that point, I talked to him about it because of it being a concern. He said there was kids that walked up and down there, there's no sidewalk, there's really no shoulder on that road, as you're aware of, and so that was kinda the thought as to the 20 miles an hour because there's no sidewalk and with duplexes coming in, more kids could be moving in and they were concerned about that, so, that's what I recall from that, so, I was the one that brought up at the Safety Commission, so, I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
With that additional information, I retract my, my motion. If there's, if there's not a shoulder, if there's not areas for residents to walk along that roadway, then yes, I...
Yeah, and I didn't, I didn't know if I should come up and say that, but then I remembered the Burma part and so I wanted to share that, so...
Thank you, I didn't, I didn't recall exactly what that was, yes.
I guess to add to this, so it sounds like maybe for long-term planning that this road could use widening, use sidewalks, and if it's expanding out there, it might be something to look at for the long-term planning of our road program, so...
And I would add, too, that speed limits are generally set according what, according to what drivers are comfortable driving at. It's a percentage based on that. So, depending on the road design, how that road, if it's a straight road, if it's a curvy road, there's many factors just in, in basing your speed limit than what you think. So, that's typically how speed limits are set. So, if you standardize, you know, that's, I, I agree, trying to make things a little more standard on, on things that are similar, but things that are different, we'll have to, have to address those.
I wanna add one thing real quick, basically to that road, but most of those roads other there, over there, other than West Chestnut, a lot of them don't have sidewalks or anywhere for people to walk and you can change the speed limit all you want, but I don't know that it's going to slow people down because they come flying down Old Jefferson and then head up Clay Mine. I'm sure Kathy can vouch for the speed going down Coats and Destin. It's that whole line where there, there's no sidewalks or anything, people can walk and you're about to get plowed over all the time.
When, when I drove it today, I was, I looked down, I was doing 20 and that was plenty comfortable, but, you know, and I, you know, me, I'm a lead foot anyway, but I was trying to, yeah, really, but I was, you know, I was trying to be obvious of what, you know, be aware of what it was and what felt comfortable there.
Eventually, you probably wanna get a counter, get an idea, put a counter there to see how much traffic is going through it.
Okay, then Bill 1731 stands with a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Yes.
Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
No.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
No.
Mr. West?
No.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Henchy?
Yes.
Five councilmembers affirmative, three opposed.
Very well. Bill passes.
Madam Clerk, would you be able to identify the minutes where this was discussed? At some point, would you email it to us?
I absolutely would, yeah.
That way we can actually read what was discussed at the, at the commission meeting, maybe gain some additional information.
Yeah, it is a very brief one. I pulled it up in my email and it basically said exactly what Chief Singh said, that it was a citizen who brought that concern before them, there's no sidewalks, there's more children due to the extra construction in the area, the traffic is still plowing through, so, but I will send that forward to you, sure.
And then, would it be possible to maybe have someone from the commission present at our next meeting?
Chief Singh is on the commission.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, Chief Singh, Kyle Brummer, Mayor Myers, myself, Mary, Bill.
We're all here.
It just felt like we didn't have all the information, so...
Absolutely.
Okay, we'll move on to second readings. Bill 1726, amended Fourth Street enactment of a stop sign, I think that was discussed last meeting. Does anybody have any further questions on that?
We need to read it.
Yeah. Councilman Washington?
Bill Number, Bill Number 1726, amending the Fifth Street enactment of a stop sign. An ordinance amending Section 110, 280-283, stop sign and yield sign to the Fulton City Code by enacting a new stop sign and establishing an effective date. I make a motion that we, I make a motion that we move the Bill 1726 at the next scheduled council meeting.
Second.
Very well, I think that has been discussed. Does anybody want further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I've expressed concerns about this and whether it really will solve the problem that's, that's there, so I drove down there today and, again, and I won't, I don't wanna divulge how fast I was able to get up to between the stop signs, but I really don't think this is gonna solve the problem. But in the interest of consistency on that, because it's, right now it's a three-way stop, it's, you know, coming out, coming out of the hospital and then the two on the cross street, I forget what that is now.
State Street.
State Street, okay. That is probably a good idea to make a four-way stop just to alleviate some confusion there, so, and in the interest of public safety, I, but I don't think it's gonna solve the problem of speeding on Fifth Street.
Okay.
Even though it's a 20 mile an hour speed limit.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, Councilman Washington, are you wanting to move this to the next council meeting or would you file a list?
Can I rescind and I'd like to move this to the next for final passage for tonight's meeting for the third reading.
I have to say, too, I actually drove it as well. Swim practice has started again and MSD is where the kids have practice and I have to say, they don't even pause going into the state hospital and I, I was just, you know, I pulled out there just so I could see and woo, it was close. So, I agree, I think it definitely needs to be just for safety purposes.
Okay. Okay, seeing no further discussion, all in favor of passing Bill 1726, on to third reading at the next meeting?
Tonight's meeting.
Are you gonna read it tonight? I thought he said third. Okay.
Did you change the second?
All right, reading for the third time tonight, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Okay, Councilman?
Bill Number 1726, amending the Fifth Street enactment of the stop sign and an ordinance amending Section 110-283 stop sign and yield sign to Fulton, Fulton City Code by enacting a new stop sign and establishing an effective... to Fulton, uh, Fulton City Code by enacting a new stop sign and establishing an effective date. I make a motion that we place Bill 1726 for final passage at tonight's meeting.
Okay, very well. We've discussed it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Henchy?
Yes.
Mr. Luther?
Yes.
Eight council members affirmative.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to, uh, Bill 1727, the rezoning on 1735, uh, Business 54 South. Councilwoman Nelson, would you read that for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill Number 1727, rezoning 1735 Business 54 South. An ordinance reclassifying under the zoning code, attractive land located at 1735 Business 54 South from its present zoning designation R1 Residential to C2 Commercial in Fulton, Missouri and establishing an effective date. Make a motion, we place Bill Number 1727 for a third reading at tonight's council meeting.
Very well. I think this has been discussed as well and it's been to the planning and zoning and, uh, the recommendation was to, uh, change the zoning on that. Do you have any comments or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Want to read it again, please?
Yes, sir. Bill Number 1727, rezoning 1735 Business 54 South. An ordinance reclassifying under the zoning code, attractive land located at 1735 Business 54 South from, from its present zoning designation R1 Residential to C2 Commercial in Fulton, Missouri and establishing an effective date. Make a motion for final passage at tonight's council meeting for Bill Number 1727.
Very well. All in favor of passing of 1727 tonight for the third reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Do you do a roll call, please?
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Henchy?
Yes.
Mr. Luther?
Yes.
Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Eight council members affirmative.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to third reading. Councilwoman Nelson, would you read Bill Number 1725, the annual increment rate increases for utilities?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill Number 1725, annual incremental rate increase for utility services amended. An ordinance establishing an annual incremental utility rate increase combined with an additional percentage adjustment not to exceed 5% or fall below 0% based on the Consumer Price Index, CPI of Missouri, as calculated by the Missouri State Tax Commission for City of Fulton Utility Services. Make a motion for final passage of Bill Number 1725 at tonight's council meeting.
Second.
Very well. Uh, is there any discussion? We've discussed this, uh, the utility board recommended this as, uh, well as I know Daryl is and, uh, Courtney have worked on it diligently. Do we have any discussion?
I just wanted to, uh, say that I like the, the word that's been put into this, the way it's worded now. Thank you very much for, for the extra effort to get, get this right.
Yeah, I wanted to reiterate that, just even the, the quote checks and balances that were put in there so that way even when we're no longer here and there's a lot of, uh, hopefully newer folks up here in our place, uh, be still, you know, looked at with a, a fine-tooth comb and not just being an automatic reading that people don't expect, so thank you for all the hard work on this.
Okay. Very well. All in favor of, um, the final reading of Bill 1725, please say yes.
Yes.
Oppose?
No.
Would you please, uh, do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
No.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
No.
Mr. Henchy?
Yes.
Mr. Luther?
Yes.
Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Six council members affirmative.
Bill passed, thank you. We'll move on to announcements. Uh, the next council meeting will be October the 22nd at 6:30. Um, the City of Fulton will be closed on October the 14th for Columbus Day and Indigenous People Day. And the open night, night of the Festival of Lights will be December the 5th. And so I know, uh, Charlene's excited about that, as we all are. That's always a, a really fun night.
She's ecstatic. Um, a couple of quick things I also wanted to add. First off, it's really wonderful to see some leadership Callaway people here tonight, so thank you all for coming out. It's wonderful to have you here. Um, and then secondly, just reiterate, thank you so much to our crew members who are deployed, um, you know, and, and meeting the nation's need right now. We, we think of you all, we hope for your safety and we know you're gonna represent us incredibly well, but our thoughts are also with your family. Um, thank you for stepping up when it was needed most. So lastly, I also just want to thank Dustin. He's put a lot of time and effort into getting this budget, um, you know, worked out and cleaned up and, and thank you to all the team members as well. I know sacrifices were made, it's not always what we want to do. Um, but again, I really appreciate the work that all of you put into this as well as your teams as well. So thank you very, very much. The other thing I wanted to highlight, Mayor, is we have the trunk or treat coming up on the 26th out at Morgan Stocker Complex and that's gonna be hosted by Fulton Police Department. Um, it is a $1 donation that's requested and that money goes to help fund Shop With A Hero. So hopefully we can see you all out there.
And Mr. Mayor, I've got a shameless plug, please. Uh, Fulton Quanis is hosting Pancake Day on Friday, November the 1st. It's gonna be at the Senior Center. I've got tickets available as well as some other folks here in the room are also members of Quanis and they'll have tickets available. Um, it's gonna be a great day, it's gonna, it's 13 hours of service. We offer food from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. that day. And we're continuing over a 70-year tradition that Fulton Quanis has been providing a, a Pancake Day fundraiser first Friday in November in this community. First of November, yes.
Did I also see something about a sweaty sweater run in association with the Festival of Light kickoff? Could you plug that?
It's not that same day, so it's not, I mean, it's following Saturday.
Saturday?
It's the weekend after.
Okay, so everybody come out for that sweaty sweater run.
We're giving it a work for the ugly Christmas sweater.
Ugly Christmas sweater, I love it.
So I can run slow, as long as I'm ugly, I still win.
I, I do want to express thanks. I was gonna say this earlier, uh, to Dustin and the rest of the staff on the budget that's been worked on. I just want some more details and I'll get with you.
Okay, seeing no further business, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.